O'Brien Bergman.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Whalen.
Here.
Zappa.
Here.
At this time, I'd like to request that the trustees nominate a president for OTAM.
I would move that we nominate Joe Cawthorne as temporary president.
I think it's been seconded.
Oh.
Go ahead Gloria. We can vote or not vote, or you can just say.
Second.
You go ahead.
Okay. All right, well, let's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Don't want you to get too big a head.
You only get one vote. Okay, let's continue with the meeting. The second, the first item up is review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting of August 4th, 2009, so the chair would entertain a motion to accept those meeting minutes. That's in your packet.
I'll move approval.
Okay, motion has been made, it's seconded. Is there any discussion of the meeting minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Next item is comments from the floor. It's an opportunity for those of you out here, if they would like to make the board aware of topics, or issues, or opportunities that are not on today's agenda. Now is your time.
Please state your name and address.
Yes, Darpaten, Two Forest Station, Maine. And I wanted to use this opportunity to voice my concern about killing of deer within the village limits. According to. According to state statutes, use of any person who shall discharge or cause the discharge of any missile from any firearm, slingshot, bow and arrow, or other weapon within forty rods of any public park, square, or enclosed enclosure owned or controlled by any municipality within this state, and resorted to for recreation or pleasure when such park, square, or enclosure is wholly situated within the limits of such municipality. Also, it further states that it is unlawful to hunt a hundred yards or less from a structure, a structure without the owner's permission. As a community, many of us have concerns about the safety. The discharge of any lethal weapon in this municipality is lunacy. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other comments? Okay, moving on, Census 2010. Ardell Ladd, Government Partnership Specialist. Just gonna lead us in that discussion. Or presentation.
I've got one already, actually, thank you.
Well, I thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to talk about Census 2010. We think of April 1st, 2010, being a long ways away. We have to get through winter first, but there's a lot of work to be done to get ready for it. The addressing is pretty much completed there. That's an ongoing thing, but the largest part of it is done. With the local updating the census addresses, being in contact with the 911 centers, working with the post office, any permit listings that we check on, and survey of construction for new dwellings and that. I always tell people, if you think your Christmas list is hard to keep up to date, think of keeping an address file of every housing unit in the United States up to date. It's a big undertaking. But what I am doing as a Government Partnership Specialist is meeting with, I have 510 local governments within the area that I cover, the seventeen counties, and they will be out of the Eau Claire Local Census Office. And from 1960 to 1990, they found every ten years, five percent less people mailed back their census form. So that meant, we had to go out and try to find these people and get the forms completed. They decided they needed to do something to stop that trend, so in 1990, they tried this partnership program on a trial basis. And it worked quite well in the areas that they used it in, and so in 2000, we conducted the partnership program nationwide. We were, our goal in 2000 was to keep the mail response rate at least equal to what it had been in 1990, and not decline any further. We were successful enough that here in Wisconsin, we raised the mail response rate by five percent, and we were third in the nation on the mail response rate. So, of course, they raised the bar on us this time, and they want us to raise it another five percent.
What is the mail response rate?
That is, that is, a letter will be sent early in March, telling people, the form is coming. Then the form will be sent to their address in mid-March, and then they look for it to be returned around the 1st of April.
Yeah.
And if they voluntarily return the form, that's what we call the mail response rate. And we feel we get a more accurate census if they complete the form and mail it back, than if we have to send enumerators out to try to.
So my question is, what is that rate?
Let's see, I have a.
I didn't mean, you know, I, maybe I'm going ahead of you here, I'm just concerned about, you know, what is that number?
Okay, yes, in this area, well, here it is, right here. In St. Croix County, in Hudson area, it looks like you had about a 10 to 14.9 non-return.
Okay.
I don't know if you can see it here, this is St. Croix County.
Okay.
We have a corner up here, just north of here, where it was about a 20 to 24.9 non-return rate. The rest of the county was about 15 to 19.9 percent non-return. I don't know if a lot of this area could be absentee owners. That could be a problem, because if you look at this map, Juneau and Adams County are kinda colorful, but I've done a lot of work in that area, and I tell them in Chicago that eventually, our population in this area is gonna be higher than Chicago, because I run into all these absentee owners that have cottages along Castle Rock and Lake Petonwell, and when I would see the owners, they'd say, "Well, when we retire, we're moving up here." So that will change over time, I hope. But that is a problem, because they're not there to receive their form in March, most likely, most of them don't start coming up until around May. So, in those areas, there is a little bit of a problem that we have to deal with. The purpose of the partnership program is, we ask you to partner with us in promoting the census, letting people know that it's coming, and educating them as to the importance of it. A lot of people don't realize that census data is used for so many of the funding programs that they rely on. I have one village in Juneau County that had purchased a new ambulance this last spring, and people were quite anxious to see it, not ride in it necessarily, but to see it. And so at an event that they held, they put the ambulance out on display and put a big sign on it. Census data was used for the grant application to purchase this ambulance, so people could see, have a visual, a vision of, you know, what that census data can do for them. I have some areas that are going to use fire trucks, that they've gotten through grant applications. Some are just using information, you know, if they've gotten it to upgrade wastewater treatment plants, or things like that. Commission on Aging is a good program, if they can work through the senior meal sites and that, and let people know that that census data is very important, because seniors are continually told, "Don't give out your information to anyone." So, it's important that we do also, then, tell them about the confidentiality of it. Their name and address is never released with any of the census data. And if you go on census.gov and look up, put your zip code in, it will show the demographic profile for North Hudson, and there's no way from that information that you could say, "Well, I know who this person is, or I know who answered this question this way." One of the reasons I think it's very doable for us to increase the mail response rate this time is, people will be happy to know that it's the short form only. The first person in the household will have ten questions to answer, and for every person in the household, after that, there are seven questions. So, it will be much easier, because if any of you have ever been lucky, or however you look at it, unlucky enough to have received the long form in the past, it was quite a job. The reason that we're doing the short form only, and we're required to do that by the Constitution, to count the people every ten years, and this goes, the short form, the decennial form, goes to every household in the United States. But in the mid-'90s, Congress decided that our country was changing too fast for the census data from the long form to be current. If you had to apply for a grant, say, six, seven years after the decennial census, that might not have reflected your village at all. So they directed the Census Bureau to do a statistical sample on a monthly basis across the United States. Every county in the United States gets, a certain number of people get the American Community Survey. This is, the questions in this are very similar, or practically identical, to what the long form and the decennial censuses have been in the past. And this will give you updated information on a yearly basis, which will help you with, say, two, three years after 2010, you need to apply for a grant, you'll have more updated information. I know in 2000, I was working with a county planner up in Polk County, and he was helping a village up there that had grown quite a bit with a grant application, and this was in like 1998 or '99. And I told him about this survey that was in the works, and he said, "All that would help us so much," because he said, "That village that I'm working with doesn't look anything today like it did in 1990." So, this is a benefit to you. One thing that could happen in March and April, and you may get complaints, or you may get calls here at Village Hall, is, because this is done every month of a certain number of addresses, there will be people that get both of them in March, and they are to complete both. So that could be a problem. In the folder, you'll see information on suggestions that we have in getting word out. You can, it doesn't have to cost your village a lot of money, you can, or any at all, you can put notices on the bottom of your meeting notices, on the bottom of your minutes, you can put it on the bottom of your utility bills, on your website, if you have a website, any newsletters. Get community organizations involved by talking about it at club meetings, getting businesses involved. They can put notices in the grocery bags, or in their employees' paycheck envelopes. And I have met with the county, the county board chair, the director of aging and disabilities, and the county administrator, and I believe that they are going to do what we call an umbrella complete count committee that will help, because I realize you all share media, and so it isn't like each city has their own TV station, or each village, or newspaper and that. So, it helps if you coordinate some of those things on a countywide basis, and also the county departments can help spread the word with their clients. If you do decide to participate with us, I have a sample resolution here that we ask, that you consider. You don't have to use this one, you can type it any way you wish. And I also will leave with Becky, this sheet that is just a very short paragraph about Census 2010, that could be used, and I put four on a page when I was doing it, because it was so short, so that if you ran off, you know, fifty copies, you'd have 200 messages to stuff into envelopes, or something. Trempeau County in 2000 had a rubber stamp made up for each of their municipalities, and they stamped every envelope that went out. Remember Census 2000, it means money to the community, and they planned to do something like that again this time, and it didn't cost them much money, and yet, they got that message out there. The folder will tell you the different areas that we think are important to reach out to. Scholastic Incorporated has done a program for us called Census in the Schools, and it's very interesting. If you go on our website, go to Census 2010, and then click on Census in the Schools, it has some games for them, coloring sheets, and quizzes that are very interesting. We like to get the schools involved. If the children get excited about it, they'll go home and make sure mom and dad know that they should all be counted. And we found that to be very successful in 2000, and a lot of the teachers told me in 2000 that they enjoyed using it, because it was something new that they could offer to their students that they can't the other nine years necessarily. And so, it is a very neat program. I believe you had this the other day, didn't you? And on page 20 of this Complete Count Committee guide, there's 50 ways census data are used. And those can even be used to put on utility bills, or on the bottom of your meeting notices, or whatever. Just keeping that message out there, and letting people know why it's important. Are there any questions?
Please.
I'm confused about one thing that you indicated, and let's go back to your example on Juneau County, just using that, because you use it. You were indicating that there are a number of absentee owners in Juneau County, but apparently there's, these are people that reside in Chicago, and someday may retire to Juneau County. Why would that person not get their census form where they live in Chicago? Are you saying, or are you indicating that they would get one at each location?
Yes, they will, because we don't know. When we, when we have a list of addresses, we do not know who's absentee and who isn't. So, a form goes out to everyone, but if they were to fill out both of them, it will kick one out.
Okay, I own a residence in the village of North Hudson, and I own a vacant lot in the village of North Hudson. Am I going to get two census forms?
No, because the vacant lot wouldn't be in our master address file, because there isn't a housing unit on it.
So anything with a housing unit will receive a census form?
Right.
That's the key.
Yes, that's it, yes. Yes, in fact, sometimes I question their definition of a housing unit, because if it has a roof, and windows, and a door that are closed, they consider it a housing unit.
Yeah, you indicated there were two forms, or two things that were gonna go out about, roughly a month apart, or something like that?
Well, what I was saying is, this is the statistical sample that's ongoing all of the time now. So there are some households in St. Croix County that could get this form, as well as the decennial form. But the way they do it, a letter will go first to the household, about the first part of March, telling them that the form is coming, and to be looking for it. Then about mid-March, they send out the census form.
Okay.
And then, the census day is considered April 1st of 2010. And towards the end of March, they will, or after Census Day, they will send another card thanking the person for having completed the form, or if they haven't, reminding them to do so. And then after that, the non-response follow-up will start.
Okay, okay. What's that, you say that one, that one thing that you had was a continuing?
Yes. We take a few addresses out of every county, every month, and it's a.
That's something that you do. The people here would not see that.
Oh, no, no, we do all of the work with the census. All we're asking, all we're asking the local governments to do is to help us get word out why it's important, because it's, we try to do an accurate count.
Okay, I was just, I was just concerned if they were gonna get two pieces of paper that they were gonna have to fill out. But, you know, we have that telephone system, that we can access all of the people in North Hudson, and we can send, would seem to me, and I'm just talking out loud here, the, probably the best service that we could do to you, as well as our citizens here, is to make some sort of public announcement, and it goes out, floods to the telephones in our area, and that should take care of it.
That's neat.
So, I would suggest we do that.
That's the first I've heard of that, and that's a very good idea.
Could I ask one question?
Sure.
Requesting volunteers for Complete Count Committee. Could you just briefly explain what that committee would do for everyone here, and what's the value of having a Complete Count Committee would be?
Okay, yes. It's entirely up to your local government, what kind of committee you want. In some areas, they have one person doing it, in some areas, they have three, in some areas, they have 12. In Chicago, I wouldn't guess how many committees and subcommittees and that, that they have. But you look at what resources you have in your community, businesses, schools, community organizations, churches, and think of what is the best way to reach out to them. If you have somebody in town that's interested in genealogy, genealogists are very interested in an accurate census count, because, I said earlier, their name and address is never released with any of the data, and of course, the data will not be released with the name and that, but in 72 years, in 2082, the name and addresses will be available, and genealogists are always very anxiously awaiting the release of that.
Wait for 2082?
And I don't know if any of us in this room will care, if anybody knows where we lived on April 1st of 2010. But genealogists, historians are very interested in it, and sometimes, I have, in Adams County, there's a woman from the Historical Society that is one of the three people on their Complete Count Committee, and I mean, she's just going gung ho.
Yeah, just so I know, is, and I don't know if this is your question Gloria, but our obligation, or our help is to get people to fill out the form and send it in. We don't have to count them here, do we?
No, no.
Great.
No, we have to have.
Glad to hear that.
We have to have people.
Oh, thanks.
You can, if you, and.
Look each stamp.
And we are recruiting now, the recruiting number, if you know of anybody that might be interested, the recruiting number is on the inside of the folder here, and we are starting to recruit, and of course, these are jobs that last just a short time, but, you know, if you know of anybody, and if you wanna put word out that those jobs are available, they can call that toll-free number.
I am the representative for the Cable Access Board for North Hudson, and I would see no problems if the board doesn't have an issue with making a recommendation to cable board, if they have dead airtime on TV in between programs, to simply put something out there that this.
Public service announcement.
Public service participation in this.
You can, yeah.
You could star in it.
I don't think so. But I'd be, I'd be happy to make that recommendation to that committee, and see if they can get some free airtime, because on something like this, if it means a new fire truck, or some grant money, it's definitely worth it for all of us.
Or even for the Commission on Aging for seniors, their meal sites, the funding for their programs is so important, and a lot of times, seniors think, "Oh, I'm old, I don't need to fill that out, they don't need to know anything about me at this point." And just making them realize that those programs they rely on are dependent on it. And one very important thing that we have to keep in mind, I had heard the other day, Congressman Kind is telling people at his meetings, that California is looking at gaining 10 congressional seats after this next decennial census. If those, if they gain 10 more seats, they have to come from someplace. And we lost one congressional seat after Census 2000, even though we'd done a good job on our count. But it's critical that we make sure we get every man, woman, and child in this state counted on April 1st of 2010, so that we at least make every effort we can to keep what seats we have, because we don't need to lose any more voice out in Congress and let California gain 10 more.
Some states have fewer representatives than they have senators.
Yes.
Thank you, Ardell.
South Dakota, thank you.
If there are any questions, feel free to contact me.
Okay. Okay, next item is the amended Class B license for extended premises, Malaloo In Fall Motorcycle Run.
I would move that the Class B, Class B retail license for the sale of fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors for the Malaloo In be temporarily amended for an event taking place October 10th, 2009, with six, seven conditions that we can discuss.
Yeah, I saw that earlier. Where is that in our public safety?
No.
Where is it? Was it right after? Okay. Thank you, I think I just found it. Yep. Okay, so we had a motion to approve that Class B retail license. Was there a second? Okay, Sanders seconded. All those in favor of the mo, is there any discussion, first of all? Yeah, go ahead.
When we indicate payment for village services must be paid within 30 days, how is that determined? Is that primarily the cost of law enforcement and associated activity, as far as your department? Mark?
And administration for mailouts and stamp postage reimbursement. They pretty much reimburse us for everything.
Okay. Historically, I'm assuming they've been good about that, there's not been a collection problem?
We've already received an initial down payment on the next run for, she was in today for October, so, yes.
You know, I know there was a issue raised at one of the last board meetings about the noise, and in having talked to the people in, on Sixth Street, it's, it's, it seems like more people like it than not, and it's one of these issues, that noise is always a concern, but, you know, the opportunity arises to close your windows, or leave for the day, if you know that that is the case. You know, we certainly wanna make everybody in our village proud of what we do, but this has been an ongoing thing since Gary Maltzer was alive. It's probably not quite as much of an impact as Pepper Fest, but it has been going on for quite some time, and it really does bring a lot of, a lot of great things to the community. And I have, I took that comment from that board meeting several months ago to heart, and talked to a few people, and obviously, if anybody is offended from it, I hope that they would come forward in a professional manner, and bring it up, and go from there.
Any other discussion? Okay, the motion is made to approve the license for extended premises. All those in favor signify by saying, yeah, Sanders did. Sanders did. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Let's see, new business from the board or staff, I guess, the only thing, I was gonna make a comment here, and maybe you were Gloria, too, but we do need to get together Friday morning sometime to approve, what is it Gloria? It escapes me.
Another extended premise, or extended premises permit.
Okay.
This one is for the village, and.
Okay.
For outing, and it missed the.
Yeah. So, for board members, I'm guessing, is there any way that we can do this, like at 7:30 on Friday morning? Could we get a quorum to do that? George will not be here, but I promise I will be here.
I can make it.
It's one, two, three, four.
We need a full board?
We don't need a full board, we need a quorum.
I'll definitely be here.
How long would you anticipate?
Five minutes.
Okay, I can do it at 7:30?
One, two, three, four. Mark, you're not available? Okay, well, we are gonna meet then at 7:30, so if. Okay, well, we are gonna meet then at 7:30, so if Becky, if, are you, if you're gonna publish that thing for 7:30 then on, on Friday?
Post it. Yep.
And that's all I was going to bring up. Gloria, did you have anything else or did you have anything?
Nope, that was, that was it, thank you.
Thank you. Plan Commission Recommendations. Do you have any? I think there was.
My voice is actually out of tone, so I just, other than, how here do you want to?
There was an application.
There's an application for a CSM or only here David Burnley.
Uh huh.
That position should be in your packet.
Yeah. Okay. Well, without the chair here, my guess is we can still talk about it and approve it. I don't know, is, is anybody, yeah, if you can walk us through it, that'd be great.
This came before the Plan Commission and they reviewed it. It's also been reviewed by the engineer and Kevin and I, I think, you know, you've got a letter in your packet, you've got the application from the applicants, the certified survey map, the applicants are here if you have any questions, but the Plan Commission, you know, did do a thorough job and unanimously recommended it, so I guess that's probably what Mike would tell you if he were here.
I'll second, hold on, sir. I'll second. Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Let me, let me just ask a question so I know, is essentially there were, were there originally two lots here and now you wanna make three?
Dave, would you wanna take us, the microphone, just in case any of the board members have any questions?
There is a dotted line that goes right through the center of that parcel and that represents how it was divided.
The old, the old, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
You should state your name.
David Burnley, I live at 811 Riverside Drive North, North Hudson. And yes, there were two lots, originally in the Village Platte, there were two lots that were side-by-side contiguous lots and what's happened now that my father's passed away is that we need to split off at least one of the parcels, which ended up actually being, splitting off the parcel with his home and then the back parcel is going to be assembled into one parcel, 4.77 acres. And that's really what's before you.
My question is, who owns Lot 2 and Lot 3 now?
Lot, let me think.
I can answer that question. The owner is the estate of David's father.
Okay.
Because David's father was the, was the owner and he died.
Of all of this, of all of this?
No.
Yes, all of this.
Two, three, and, one, two, and three.
Oh, no.
No, not one, two, and three, no.
You own your current lot.
Correct, correct.
That's right.
Which is?
We, well, basically, I own and, and do until this would be approved. The eastern 180 feet, actually, that's the, is that Lot 3? I don't.
And everything above it.
Everything, everything above it, correct. Right, and what we're doing is we're splitting off a portion of the other lot. The house and just the contiguous, or just the immediate land with it and then we're assembling the back portion of both lots.
Okay, but Lot 2 is, is, is the estate?
Is the estate, correct, yes.
Okay, yeah. I just didn't wanna think that there's somebody not represented here that owned Lot 2 and 3 and all of a sudden they no longer own what they think they own.
And Dave is the representative of the estate too, I think, aren't you?
Correct, well, only and I are both co-personal representatives, that's correct.
All right, that answers my question, anybody else?
Just quick, I'm obviously real familiar with this property, Dave, but what's the access to Lot 1?
Lot 1 is a big one in the back or? That is through Bluebird Court. It actually abuts Bluebird Court.
Okay, so if there's no access, it'll come out to Riverside Drive?
Right, no, yeah, that's.
Or it could be Pine Street, could it not?
Conceivably, although economically probably not very feasible because of the.
Too long of a driveway.
Well, there's also a large, yeah, well, and there's also a large storm sewer that goes through both lots on that, on the back end of the property too.
All right. We won't ask for a typographical map from the engineer. Yeah, he could do it, but we won't ask him. All right, any other questions? Okay, we got a motion made and seconded to approve this plan. All those signify by saying aye if they approve?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion's carried, thank you. Let's see, we are down to item 8, Personnel Finance Committee Recommendations Claims. We do have, we do have claims, as you can see on the third sheet there, and, and I think, Jim, you suggested the motion, so I'll ask you to make the motion again if you will.
I'd be happy to, I'd move that we approve the August 2009 non-recurring claims totaling
Okay, motion.
Connie, were you able to get that motion?
Certainly, I'd be happy to. I'd move that we approve the August 2009 non-recurring claims totaling $74,412.15. I believe Mark did.
Yeah, Mark seconded it, okay. Any discussion? All those, let's see, we got, this is a, we got a payment, so this is, we gotta have a roll call, right? Sandra?
Yeah, yes.
Darrell?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe, yes? Belene?
Yes.
Mark? Okay, motion carried. Next item is Telephone Contract Approval. And Jim, would you also lead us through that discussion?
Absolutely. Do I make the motion first so we can talk about it or should I talk?
However you wanna do it.
I would make the motion first.
I would move that we accept the AT&amp;T Centrix Telephone Contract for the amount of $191.43 monthly with a maximum escalation clause over the five-year term of that contract not to exceed $1.60 per phone line.
Okay, that motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Could you just give us a brief, you know?
Absolutely.
Two-sentence synopsis of why we're doing this and, and what it means?
Two sentences is that we need dial tones in the Village Hall. We now have our own phone system that we own, that we acquired when we did the addition on the Village Hall. We are now able to save money monthly by securing this contract for five years and it saves us slightly less than $100 a month, maybe. And it's, that pretty much sums it up.
Boy, I'd hate to diagram that sentence.
Well, I did it one, that too.
It saves us only $100 a month from what we have because we had Centrex before, but if we were going out to market for the same service, it's probably $10,000 in savings, so.
Very good.
It's, nice job, Jim.
Yeah, Jim, you know, on behalf of the board and the village, I know this, we don't see the work that's behind all of this, but we certainly appreciate it, it's.
You're welcome.
It's good work for us, so. Okay, I think since this is a, something we gotta pay for, we need another roll call vote, starting down here. Mark, Belene?
Yes.
Joe, yes? Jim?
Yes.
Darrell?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
All right, I said Sarah, I meant Sandra, I don't know why I said that. So that motion is carried. Next item, I think, is Voice Recorder for the boardroom. And Jim, will you lead us in that discussion?
I will field this one and also in two sentences. Our current cassette tape player that we're using was probably considered obsolete about a decade ago and we have the opportunity to acquire one that is virtually new from the city of Hudson at a discounted rate. I can actually hold this little thing up and this is what will record digitally our meetings from this point on. It costs $75 and it also comes with Nate Scoog's training and instruction as to how to operate it, so all of the board heads or committee heads will be able to record their meetings digitally, give the, give it to Gloria and she'll download it into the computer. So I would move to approve the purchase of a voice recorder from the city of Hudson at a total cost not to exceed $75.
Motion has been made and seconded to purchase this voice recorder, all those, well, we gotta do this again, don't we? Sandra?
Yes.
Yes. Darrell?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item is the Enterprise Explorer Certificate. Was that something that you let us in Gloria, or was that you again, Jim? Jim again?
I can field this one, can I, can I have a sentence and a half on this?
You can have, you can have three sentences on this one because we took some time at finance with it.
The issue is we need the ability to allow a web browser to verify the identity of a secure site before sending private information. We are currently using Enterprise Explorer with the village. We have adopted this new system within the last few months, but the certificate that, of authenticity is not valid currently. By validating the certificate, it'll verify the, the identity of the remote users accessing the village's email server. So, the motion that I will make for this is to approve the purchase of a two-year Enterprise Explorer Certificate and to have Press Center install and supply that certificate at a total cost not to exceed $350.
Motion has been made and seconded to purchase this, is there any discussion?
Already had it.
Yeah. Great, thank you again.
You bet, no problem.
Mark? Mark, yes or no?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes for Joe, Jim?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion is carried. Okay, 2010 Budget Update and Discussion, we're in that process. Gloria, did you wanna lead that?
Just quickly, you all have a packet from me with a memo and some documents for a proposed process to get it to, to the budget and into the additional forms. It's kind of the foundation that leads you to the final product. I'd like you to, to look over it, if you've got questions, get back to me. I've also passed out a revised updated budget showing through August year-to-date numbers.
That's what we got?
Yep.
Sitting in front of us.
Yep, and the, the projected year-end numbers and then we're working on our budget process.
Okay.
For 2010, we, we haven't completed that yet.
All right. Any comments on that one? Mark, I'm sure you were just loaded with questions.
Yeah, later.
Okay. Moving on to Public Works Chair, update?
We have no recommendations for the board tonight as a result of the regular meeting held last month and then we did have a special meeting to deal with some budget issues, but just some general comments. We spent a fair amount of time talking about the five-year plan and it is going to be the advocacy position of Public Works Committee that we adhere to the five-year plan. There are some indications that in, in recognition of some tight budget, historic tight budgets and we recognize that that is the case, that there have been some delayed items and if we fall behind as far as the, the plan is concerned on, on our infrastructure and our street improvements and some surface overlays and, and actual some reconstructions, it'll be harder and harder if we incrementally keep doing that to catch up. So, it will be a strong position that we adhere to that five-year plan and look proactively as, as far as we can into the future and plan appropriately those, for those, so that we do not get behind the power curve, but, but stay with it. We also talked about some capital items, there will be some, some recommendations that will come forward in, in Mark's budget as far as capital items that need addressing in the, in the budget and that will be part of the process. And we spent some time, again, in talking about the, the car shop area. At some point, we, we feel that there needs to be some strategic discussion about that area. It is the last available site within the corporate limits, village limits of, of the village for industrial development and there have been some requests for some changes in water and, and storm sewer installations at that location. It's the feeling of the committee until there is a clear vision of what we want to do there and a proactive vision in terms of what might be accomplished there as, as far as increased commercial industrial tax revenue in the village, that it would be foolish to try and piecemeal on an expense basis some of the, the costs and we've had this discussion with Kevin as well, but if, at an early juncture, we think the full board should strategically consider the opportunity that is there for the car shops and be prepared to look at that potentially even as, as a TIF district to develop that site more fully.
Okay, thank you. Public Safety.
And I'm sorry you didn't hear the comment at, well, yeah, you were at Finance. We totally expect to have some of these deadlines not be met, but it at least gives us some foundation of what has to happen next and it allows a timeframe for the board to meet, to discuss and have workshops for the budget purposes also. And there's never gonna be a good time to start it and since it is in the budget process, it is a perfect time to get going on. Yeah, well, when I'm, you're short-staffed and you gotta deal with what you gotta do. I don't think it's gonna be as complicated as it's being made out to be. It, if, if there's actually read through it and with an open mind.
Okay. Public Safety, we did meet, the meeting minutes are in your packet if you have any questions, please bring them up to either Mark or myself. Mark, I don't think there's anything we need to have recommended or any recommendations or motions. So we can move on to Public Welfare.
All right, well, this will be more than just a couple of sentences, but I'll try my best. We had quite a lengthy Public Welfare Committee meeting last couple of weeks ago. At the top of that, I guess I will start out by just simply requesting a motion. We had received and approved the proposal from the River Valley Deer Management Organization. We have since had our legal staff review it and I would like to make a recommendation to the board to approve the River Valley Deer Management Contract. And then we can discuss it.
It's on the table?
Yeah.
Do you have any comments, Terry, from, from your review? Were there any sticks above the water that needed?
No, I don't really, I, I reviewed it pretty thoroughly. I talked to the DNR about it, I met with the DNR last week about it and I made a lot of comments in this document, I can't remember off the top of my head what they all were, so there's a lot of my work in this document too. We made a lot of changes from what Lon gave us and then it went back to Lon and, and, you know, he was okay with all the changes.
And from your review, you're satisfied now that it is in the form that you're comfortable in having us approve it?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes. Now, it's a policy decision. You know, you had a, a resident express some concern about whether, whether it's appropriate at all.
I understand that. I meant from the standpoint of the contract itself.
You're fine, yeah, yes.
And I would like to just touch just briefly on a couple of items in this, and it's been a lengthy process, and I would like to just address anybody, but, um, it's, it's always interesting to hear what people like Star have to say. We've gotten a lot of positive comments on this, but just so everybody on the board understands the effort that went into this, this was not something that we came up with overnight. A lot of effort went into it. Um, we have worked this contract over thoroughly, and from what the Wisconsin DNR is saying, it has got the potential of being a model con, model, ah, program for other townships and villages to follow. Safety is of our utmost concern. Just so that everybody knows, we still have to abide by state laws, all of the requirements that the Metro Hunt guidelines impose on us, and everything else. We have basically kept safety and, um, and success at our number one, at the forefront on this. Again, if anybody has anything to bring to me, I am happy to attempt to answer any questions as best as humanly possible. We would not be doing this if it wasn't a very serious problem. If it's not dealt with now, it simply is going to become an overwhelming nuisance very soon, and just so that everybody understands, this is a pilot program. We are using, utilizing this to acquire data, to be able to refine this program going forward, and the success or failure of it revolves around the public support, and that's why I want everybody to know that this is not just something that came up overnight. It started out with Fargo, with the North Dakota DNR. I've gone to Minnesota, I've gone to Wisconsin. We have taken dozens and dozens of, of wildlife management programs, tried to take the best parts out of all of them, refine it to a point that I feel comfortable that my grandchildren, my family can be walking down any road at any time, and they are one-hundred percent safe. And it is my hopes that everybody understands that there will always be deer in the village. We are not going to eliminate them by any means. We're going to just try to get it to a point where maybe we can pick an apple off of an apple tree before a deer gets it, or before we hit that deer with a car. So, with that being said, um, I...
I think we have a motion from you to accept the, ah...
We do.
Ah, the Deer Management Pilotment Program. I'm gonna read it here. Also known as the Metro Herd Control created by River Valley Deer Management LLC, to use a controlled archery hunt to reduce deer in the village for 2009, 2010 hunting season. That's correct?
That is correct.
Okay, we need a second for that motion.
I did.
You did?
Joe, before I do that, if I could, if the, um, TV, the audio/video people are listening, if they could focus on the map that's on the wall just briefly, I would like to touch on the comment that Star Peyton made, and it's also been brought up to me by another resident. And I just wanted to clarify a few things, that there is a state law that says that you cannot hunt within six, forty rods. Thank you very much, Mark. You cannot hunt within forty rods of a park.
Sixteen-point-five feet.
Yeah, a rod, yeah, just, this is a trivia, trivia thing. If you don't know, a rod is sixteen-point-five feet. So, at any rate, we want to abide by this. Again, this is a pilot program. We're not trying to look for concessions. We're, we're going to work within the laws that have been written, and with the hopes of getting the support from the village residents and, and start to see an impact. What, what has happened here, though, it has very dramatically limited some of our abilities, and where the DNR had really wanted us to hopefully be able to reduce the population by thirty to fifty deer this year, this may make that an impossibility, unfortunately. So, the issue arises that, like, in, in the subdivisions up to the northeast of the village, it, it virtually eliminates the ability to hunt on seventy percent of that. And, you know, the goal is, is to make sure that, that everybody is aware. We are not going to do anything that is going to endanger anybody. The people that are out here doing this are six people that are certified, have met unbelievably strict criteria, have passed background checks, two of which are, um, public police officers, I guess is the word. So, you know, it has really limited things, but we're gonna work within it. Again, we want everybody to understand it, that it needs to have everybody's support towards properly.
So, the areas in gray are identified as no-hunt zones?
Yes.
Boy, I've gotta tell you, this makes me considerably unhappy. I live almost exactly in the middle of a no-hunt zone.
Well, it makes me concerned also. It, ah, the issue...
I was hoping they would be sitting on my deck doing this.
Yes, and, ah, it's our hopes that maybe as time goes on, people can see the effort that we've put into this, that this is not something that was devised overnight, that basically two years of planning and effort went into it, and, ah...
And also, Jim, I think there's a point here to be made, that this entire center area is right by the, the highway, so there likely won't be any hunting, because these are small lots, which will require a great deal of permission to be granted. Ah, and you don't want a wounded deer to be wandering onto the highway, so that will take out the center of the village, so there, there's really only about four areas where hunting is, is viable. So realistically, it takes out about eighty percent of the village.
Yeah, we only can do is, is see what happens.
Absolutely. You know, it's our goal...
Give it a try.
Again, that, um, that we, ah, we, um, move forward with sensitivity and, ah, and follow, ah, the, the rules. It's, ah, it's a heartbreaker, I will say that. And, ah, it would be nice if, after this pilot program, people realize that the professionalism exhibited by these people that have volunteered their time to help out our community is hopefully rewarded by, ah, by adapting in the future as, as things go, because it, it really does limit the ability to make this a successful program.
Well, deer have very limited range. I mean, they, they live their entire life within a fairly small area. So, this area that's identified here is fairly large with a number of parks in it, and potentially this will have virtually no impact on the deer population in this very large area.
I couldn't agree with you more.
I don't know that we know that. There are, there are going to be some places to hunt.
Four.
And they're going to, they're going to bait and entice deer into those locations.
Well, I'm still in favor of the program, but my enthusiasm has waned, because this doesn't look like it's gonna affect...
I know, well, then, we just have...
...the fifteen deer that live in my backyard at all.
We have too many parks.
There, there is one hitch or one, ah...
Tongue-in-cheek.
One point in this...
You know, we just have a lot of parks in the community. Sorry, go ahead, Terry.
Yeah. Ah, it is, it is, and I think, I think it was Mark, ah, who I talked to about this. You know, it does say in there that the park has to be, quote, "resorted to for recreation or pleasure." So, a completely undeveloped park that nobody uses, quote, "for recreation or pleasure," you know, you might be able to hunt in that park.
And again, I, as we go forward, and I appreciate the opinion on it, I've met with Lon, I've met with Mark Richard, it's our goal to appease the village residents this year. We are, we are trying to get one-hundred percent of the people in this village to support the effort that not only myself, my board, ah, this entire board, but these hunters have put together, and there have been hundreds of hours spent, and it is to do something for the residents. Nobody's gaining anything. We have put together a program that has cost the village absolutely nothing and has got the potential of succeeding. This does limit it, and, um, we do not want to make any waves at this point, and we will look forward to a successful pil, pilot program, and, ah, with the fact that hopefully next year, um, we can, ah, adapt that and determine what does really constitute a park and make sure that, ah, that we handle it properly. Thank you, Terry.
Okay.
I appreciate all the work you've put into this, too. I really, really do. It's, ah, it's been, ah, been a, been a tough one. It's been a lot of work, but I hope it benefits everybody.
So, we have a motion that's been made and seconded? Any other discussion, comments, questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. Waste hauler contract, Jim?
All right, I'm on the hot seat again. Basically, um, we received two proposals after submitting our request for proposals for a waste hauler contract. Um, this is gonna be two phases, but the first part of my motion is that, um, basically I'll back up just a little bit. We published a request for proposal. In that proposal, were a few areas that were considered vague and unclear by the two bidders on this. After reviewing it, we did agree. I met with Jennifer Havens and those haulers, and we have determined that it would be in our best interest at this point to clarify those areas that we acknowledged as being vague and reject these two bids at this point and resubmit the request for proposal. So, I believe technically I have to do this in two separate motions. Is that correct, Gloria? Or can I...
Not necessarily, as long as it's clear.
Well, then I'll just whip it into one, and, um, I would make a recommendation to the board.
You can add them together.
Okay, yeah. Move to reject the two proposals for the garbage and recycling services received on July 31st, 2009, as submitted, and also move to re, re-release the request for proposal for the garbage, ah, recycling service for the village of North Hudson.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
I assume that concludes the Public Welfare Committee Recommendations?
You won't hear from me anymore tonight.
Thank you. Park Board?
I did.
It's the Thomas Zappa team here.
Okay.
Zappa Thomas, I'm sorry.
Hey, you're done now. It's Colleen's turn.
Um, the park board, we don't have any recommendations for this meeting. We are still working on getting the playground equipment for the park, playground of the, the Derrick Development, and are trying to find some equipment that's a little bit cheaper, since you have to factor in the cost of the sand like it and shipping and that. It doesn't, goes, the thirty-five thousand from Derrick's doesn't go as far as we'd like it to, so we're continuing to look into that. Also, when they were talking about stimulus money possibly being available, we thought this would be a good time to look into the possibility of grants for purchasing the borrowed property if that were to become available. So, starting to look more into that again, as well as possible grant to help fix the stairs at Brown's Beach. So, there's no real, no information on that yet. It's just something that we're starting to look into, and that's all we've got.
Any other comments for the park board? Not, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And we are adjourned at eight minutes after eight.
Needing to do that.